Okay, we're on, we're ready.
Hold the word.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Vice Chairman Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Correll?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy, I mean, excuse me, Hewer?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Seig?
Here.
Commissioner Romero is absent. And Commissioner Sterling?
Here.
Is there anyone in the audience who I need to say now's the time for people to speak?
Let's just do it for practice.
We still have to do it, yes.
At this time, if anyone in the public would like to come up and talk to or address the commission about anything that's not on the agenda tonight, now is the time. You have three minutes. There's nobody in the audience, so moving on. Calendar, can we have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
I also move.
I'll second.
Okay, you look at your monitors, if they don't come up, just touch them.
Oh, wait.
It came up 371.
Yeah, that's what I just saw, yeah.
Oh, thank you for noticing that. So we'll just do a verbal, we'll do a verbal for the minutes. So Vice Chair Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Correll?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewer?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sterling?
Yes.
Okay, Isaac with all eyes. I apologize for that, guys. Trying to get ahead.
Scott.
Okay, so moving on to general business, we have a public hearing.
And I will need to abstain from this item due to proximity to my personal residence.
And so will I.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Chair. Item before you this evening is a site plan and a coastal development permit to allow the construction of a two-story accessory building in the low-density residential zone at 371 West Whitley. The property is located at the intersection of Marilla and Whitley and is also adjacent to Los Limas Drive. All properties in direct proximity to the project site are also zoned low-density residential. The project site is a regular-shaped parcel that currently is developed with a single-family residence constructed in 1928 and has an 88-square-foot detached workshop building. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing detached building and construct a new 800 or 281-square-foot two-story accessory structure. The first floor would consist of a habitable workshop storage area with a full bathroom, and the second floor is an open deck with per glass, so there's no enclosed square footage on the second level. Plans, including the site plan, floor plans, and elevations have been provided as part of your staff report. The proposed project complies with all of the development standards for the low-density residential zone, including setbacks, distance between buildings, and height. The property is designated as a hillside lot in the municipal code, so is not allowed to have more than 14 feet of the building above the uppermost lot line and no more than 32 feet tall from grade on the other part of the property. The proposed building would be eight feet above the upper property line and no more than 27 feet tall from the lot's natural surface. Because it complies with the development standards for the zone, we didn't have any discussion items for this particular project. And the applicant does have a water allocation in place in order to construct the building since even though it's not designated as like a unit or a unit, because there is a bathroom in it, it kind of technically meets the definition for a bedroom, which is why they needed to have a water allocation, which they do have. Staff is recommending approval of the project as proposed by the applicant based on the findings and the conditions in the attached resolution. And the project is categorically exempt from CEQA under Class III New Construction or Conversion of Small Structures. I'm available for any questions you might have. Thank you. Is your, is the light on?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe it's just quiet.
No questions for staff? Public hearing?
I can't hear the speaker. If someone is speaking to me, I'm unable to hear them.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe it's just a matter of getting closer.
Hello, hello?
Doesn't seem like yours is on.
It doesn't go red, like?
Right.
Like even that one's picking me up, I think.
Yeah, you might have to just pull that one over, actually. Or, I don't know why that one's not working.
Is this better?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we opened the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk on this topic? Nobody wants to talk, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Any motions or any discussion before a motion? No?
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Call for a vote?
If it doesn't come up, then just touch your machine. Okay, all eyes and three abstains.
Okay, so now motion passes. So now we have a planning department by Bob presentation, right?
Yeah. We'll get our members back up here. We'll get the staff, sorry. So Bob, before you, sorry, we're going to have one announcement before you get rolling.
Hi, Lenny.
Hi, Lenny.
Hi. Thank you.
Got everybody back? Yeah, I guess.
Eric.
Oh, yes.
Wait. Bob, Kelly's going to make an announcement before you roll.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, cool. If we could check, can you check him?
Because mine's not working. Okay.
We're going to take a quick look at it. There we go.
Hello?
There we go. Back in business.
Thank you, Matt. So, did you want me to go ahead and?
Sure, if you want to, if you want to touch base. I thought we were going to cover it after, I thought we were going to cover it after Bob was on, or your comments, but that's fine.
I just figured it really quickly and we can, you know, answer any more questions you have after the meeting. So I think as you all are aware, the appeal for PC 2842 for the Cameron Hotel was heard by City Council last night at the regular meeting. They did end up voting to essentially set the project as a de novo hearing, so on November 5th, they will be having a new public hearing regarding the approval of the proposed project. So we are re-noticing and there will be kind of a new resolution and staff report for the project. The council gave specific direction regarding items related to the project. They wanted to essentially kind of refine on top of the decision of the Planning Commission, but the, I think the direction was, you know, all of the conditions and discussion that you had discussed at your meeting will be wrapped up, will continue to be part of the project moving forward to the new hearing with them, so.
I think the issue that council had is that they could not place any conditions, their options were limited to sending it back to you or denying it, approving it, sending it back to you, or having a hearing de novo in order to place some conditions, and they had a couple conditions that they wanted to put on, I think, or clarifications they wanted, and this was the only way they could do it that way. So that's why, they're not looking to necessarily overturn Planning Commission's action as much as they are looking to enhance it a little bit with some things that I think were promised but weren't put in writing, or represented but weren't put in writing, and we'd have a hard time enforcing them down the road. So, two weeks it's set for November 5th in front of council.
Yeah, okay. So if anyone has any questions after the hearing, I'm more than happy to go over that with you, otherwise we don't want to have Bob sitting too long in the audience waiting for his turn.
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw. I'm here to give you an update on our capital program, one of my favorite things to talk about. I'm planning on trying to keep this to a half an hour, so I'm going to go over a couple of quick statistics of what our program's about, and then I'll go through some of our major projects that are going to be constructing or are in near development of construction. So I'll present those on a pretty quick snapshot, but the way that if you have some questions after each project that I present, I'll say, "Is there any questions?", just so that if I can clarify anything, we can move on to the next project, okay, and not take too much time. So, the city's capital improvement plan is adopted annually with the budget, and in fiscal year 2425, the CIP plan is divided into five segments. So Public Works, we have 19 projects, the Fire Department, we have six projects, Recreation and Community Service, we have 13 projects, Special Revenue Funds such as Streets, Sewer, Housing Authority, there's six projects, Harbor Fund, 26 projects, and then our other enterprise funds such as Landfill Transit IT, there's 10 projects in those. So you can see that's a pretty hefty program that we have for, you know, the small town that we are. One of the, I think I jumped ahead here, here we go. So of the 80 identified projects identified in the 2425 plan, three projects have been completed thus far in the year, so the Crescent Hillside repairs, and you are all aware of that one up on the hillside there, we got that one done, the CDBG Phase II ADA ramp that finished at the very start of the year, and that put ramps at Third Street and then additionally moved up to Beacon for additional one. And then the underground fuel tank removal and replacement, which is out there at the fuel dock, we got that done, we were supposed to get that done by state requirements by December of '25, so, you know, we're a year and about half early getting that done. So we have that above-ground tank that will withstand sea-level rise if necessary, has 12,000 gallons of storage, and it's double-walled and out of harms way. And we'll finish up the last pieces of that to put the roof on and finish the painting of that building now that the visitor season's over with, so that's still, there's some few items left remaining besides the landscaping. There's 37 active budgeted, active and budgeted projects for construction, 2425, eight projects are active but are in their preliminary planning phase, 12 projects are equipment, procurement, and 20 projects are inactive, budgeted for implementation future fiscal years. And what I can say about that, if really if it's not in this capital program, we shouldn't be really working on it as a capital project. So we identify the projects, it's what the community wants, needs, and desires are. We look for whatever an estimated budget amount is, we go to council and get budget authority, and that really starts the process of getting into starting a project, okay? So if you see it and hear, we're working on it, it's identified as a need for the community. If not, it needs to be brought up to staff or to City Council as an identified project we'd like to put in. So that's the way it works. Okay, so one of the first large projects that you see that is right outside our door here is the Five Corner Pedestrian Project. Last night, council awarded the contract to Jordal Construction for over 4.7 million, and then there's some additives that could be added to that, which is they gave the city manager authority to add the development component where we had a pad for the workforce housing and the parking lot behind City Hall, and additionally some additional utility work to support all of that. So the scope of the project is pretty extensive, all the way from Bahia Vista coming to the Five Corners intersection and all legs out of that, and then heading up to Avalon Canyon up till we get to the golf course. It puts frontage on both sides of the road. Where there isn't frontage, it provides new pavement, it provides new lighting, new crosswalks, two small roundabouts, so that, and they'll operate in a complete street fashion where there's a space that allows for pedestrians to be, a space that is shared space for bikes to be with vehicles at a slowed speed, maximum speed of, you know, our 15 mile an hour speed limit, so. 5.3 million is budgeted, 4.5 is grant funding, so a heavily leveraged project. And the contract, like I said, will be awarded here, it's awarded by council, but it'll be executed here within days. Next project is, oh, is there any questions on Five Corners? Okay. South Beach Seawall. So the scope of this is the restoration of South Beach Seawall. We all know that we're missing our beach, we have been for years. So the scope of this project is to put that damaged piece of seawall back, there's about 80 feet that has sunk in, we'll replace that in kind, to replace the groin wall 50 feet out, right there where the recreational boat ramp is, and then bring in 6,000 cubic yards of sand, okay, to replace our beach. And from what we have studied for years, we think this is the fix to get the beach sand, and then also the beach sand, when we procure the beach sand, it'll be larger grain size. So one of the things that makes that sand transport is refractory waves that go against where the creek comes out, and then it's on an angle, and if you get a high wave action, now it starts cutting across the beach. And when that is very turbulent, it lifts, that sand gets suspended, and because it's a smaller grain size, it starts moving a little bit at a time. So if we put a bigger grain-sized sand on there, it doesn't have that opportunity to suspend for a long time and it stays in place. So that's the theory behind that project. So we have no grant funding available, we're working with $200,000-plus budget for planning and permitting now, it's in that process of environmental and permit phase, and we're seeking grant funding. It could, we do have the opportunity, if the permits come in, if money came available, that it could be here at least with the beach sand and the start of the groin wall by this next season, okay? So that's what we're attempting to do. I'm not saying that the funds will be available yet, but at least the engineering and permits would be done. Any questions on that? So the Cabrillo Mole Revitalization Phase Two, and like I discussed with council, the last phase we did was the wharf, that was Phase One, and that was, you know, over four and a half billion dollars to get that phased. Now we're in the second phase, and that's really to redo the building, and that's in a budget for $20 million. We have $17 million in grant funds, you know, and also earmarks that were given to us by the federal government. And it's the first phase zero, which is the, because we're going to be implementing this with a design-build team, and so phase zero in our construction of phase, stage zero in our construction of Phase Two is the pre-design-build activity. So really is to get out there, put some grates over those openings where the steamer's ship used to have the baggage right there, the loading ramps, and those grates will become permanent, we'll use that as an access point, a road around the construction during construction, to put temporary facilities for all of our lessees out there along the frontage of the road, and, and here it is. And you see that, and then also to put deck where the landscaping is, so in the interim, and the landscaping will be replaced when we get done with the project, but we're going to put a deck where the landscaping is for the queuing lines for the temporary facilities. So that's that area where we have 20-minute drop-off zone there. You can still see where the red areas are, those where the emergency services can service, you know, the mole and the cruise ship wharfs. And so that's all part of this, and then there's another step in it that we put utilities along the frontage to bring new utility feeds into the mole, and that would be brought along the lip of the gutter where this is before these get built, and that will supply it all the way from the trailhead building to the mole frontage there, okay? Because right now, the utilities land within the building. Here's a little greater detail, you can see where we have the temporary decking structure, and you can see that we're going to have toilets on that first blue building, the container building. The next one, we have Catalina Express, and then we have the Flyer, and then we have the Deli, okay? And so any other lessees were out there, they had redundant facilities within the community, so we're asking them, and we had written leases as such to, when we had the construction underway, that they need to relocate. They'll have an opportunity to come back, first right refusal, so they'll have the opportunity to come back after. This is a little cross-section, just to give you a better look at what that is, that container, that big box in the right is the container, that would be the office space, and then it shows you how that deck would be built from the seat wall, that's the brick seat wall there at Float Four and Five, and continue there all the way to where those containers are. So the container is actually, I mean, the deck is actually built over the sidewalks and encompass that whole area, so there is a big area to operate in front of those containers. Okay, so any questions on the mole, on those temporary facilities?
So are they getting rid of where the office and all that stuff is now and moving it?
Yes, so where the building is now, just think of that being all gone, okay? All the surfacing around the mole that's out there, out to that point, will be gone, be refreshed, all the shade structures refreshed. So, you know, it's a, it's a large project, okay? And then we, and we have additional information on our website, so you can see the renderings that were, but yes, that will all be removed after we have these temporary facilities in. So we plan on having these temporary facilities ready to function four or five months before they're needed. So then the lessees can move into there, get everything set up, they can, we anticipate construction being about 18 months, and so that's where they're going to be until we're ready to reoccupy the building. Maybe not all of, every aspect of the project will be done, but at least we'd be moving them out of the way, so now we can start working around Floats Four and Five, okay?
When will that be? When will you start doing the staging and re?
So, and the demo of the building is planned in December of '25, okay? By the time we go, because remember, we're going to go through a design-build procurement, and after we get done with this procurement, and it's kind of going parallel, so we go through the design-build procurement, that's about eight months of finish for design, and then we don't bid that, the design-build is the engineering, architecture, and the construction of the building, all in one contract.
Do you have a timeline that you had last night? That might help.
So next, okay, yeah, that's basically what I'm looking at. So you won't start until next December?
That's when we.
Start the staging?
Yeah, we tear down the building.
And relocate people?
Actually, stage zero starts here within a few months.
Yeah, you've got to rebuild everything first before you tear it down.
Timeline is a, it's a good thing to see.
So here's a good rendering. At least that's what I.
Oh, perfect. Now you're moving too fast.
You saw the sample of the restrooms, yeah.
Quick sample.
So if you have questions about, further questions, you know, we can go back and look at a few of these slides, but otherwise, you see here, the demolition of Cabrillo Mole begins December of 2025, and all the things that we're doing in the design-build to get up to that, okay? Okay? And, so here's, here's the area where there'll be fencing for the construction, like I said last night, the parking lot, we're trying, in the drop-off area, we're trying to keep consistent. There may be times when we move out there slightly as we're going to tear down the building or we're going to bring a crane in, but we're going to need access for the mole crane with their own, you know, well, all the uses of that, but we don't want to change up the drop-off too much, okay? So everybody's used to that, but now you won't go to the building, you'll go out to the frontage right away, and we try to get people off of the floats, not hang out there, now come out, and you can be better in front of Floats Four and Five, okay?
But during that time, are you not going to use the main floats, like for the express?
Every float should be available, maybe when we got to work on, you know, the shade cover on One, Two, and Three.
Okay, because I was like looking, it looks like it's.
That we're going to have temporary cover over that, you know, so you have those walkways under construction.
Yeah.
That would protect you, okay? And so there'll be some movements, as, you know, so if there's, there's, actually, right now, we've identified 10 stages of construction, and that means we're going to rig vigor everything, you know, during that time, okay? And that's so that everything keeps operating here.
Yeah.
You know, we're recognizing that, you know, that's what brings everybody higher and that's.
Yeah, we've got to make money.
That's all commuting and all that, so, yeah, we're working around that, okay? And we're also looking that we have plans like A, B, C, D, you know, as far as queuing, and at different times of the year when we have impacts, you know, we've got different lineup scenarios.
Yeah.
And even if that starts to fail, just like we did at the cruise ship, something, we flip something else open, you know, and so that we make it all, it's very dynamic and adaptable, and so we get everybody trained, and it's worked so far with the cruise ship very well. Okay? So, and then, let me get back. Yeah. Does that find where I was? Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, sure.
Because I did see the timeline, and when you start the demolition for the project to relocate people, after, from that start to finish, what, what's the timing that are you looking for all to be complete?
So construction, we're estimating 18 months, could be 24, but right now, that's, you know, our best guess before we have our design-build team, because we've had contractors, like, for example, we had the Vons contractor look at this whole project because they're used to logistics, they're used to building this type of project. We said, you know, "What's an estimate for this? What do you think it would take to, the timeframe to build this?", and they said, "We think we can do it in 18 months", okay? So that's, that's where we got that number, so.
Number 2025.
That's correct. Okay? Okay, workforce housing. So this is the pad that's right behind City Hall here, and when we started developing the plans for Five Corners, we needed to try to find some land for the ability to build some housing, okay? We found that this was an underutilized parcel that was being parking for our transit buses, and we incorporated that into the environmental approvals of the Five Corner project. Okay, so the scope of this is the construction of the workforce housing, I think it's right now potentially 20 units that could serve workforce housing on the City Hall campus, and it would be for employees and contractors that, so there would be one level of two unit, possibly two units, one level of single units, and then there could be some casitas for, like we use for contractors that we already have, some of the, some of the casitas back here that we use that the city owns, so that we could efficiently have that and use that piece of real estate three times up. It'd be a three-story building, we're thinking. The budget is, you know, for this year is $150,000 because we're working on the planning level, there's no grant funding yet, and we're looking through the financial feasibility and bringing it through the process, and that's where we're at on that project right now. We do have a water allocation for that project, and. And we do have a design for it right now. We're looking at the feasibility of making that a modular build. So the boxes would come over, and like you've seen on other projects, and all that would be put together in a pretty quick fashion after a foundation was built. And then we'd have to put the roof through trusses and do all the finishing of the outside. But we've been already to some prefabrication plants investigating that. And it's some pretty impressive stuff that comes in those prefabrication plants now. It's not like a modular home. It is just another component of how a construction is done. And it's very durable and high-quality with the finishes. Any questions on that one? Okay, so we also had been, last night, talked about the elbow. And the elbow, you see that we've done a demo. And, you know, so the proof-of-concept demo is the way we approached this. We worked with our stakeholders out in the field. We worked with community members. We received input after taking two years to being out there as staff, taking a look at some of the problems that existed. And we tried to implement something pretty quick once with some barriers. We said, you know, we've got to try something that's a little more permanent for a season to get a proof-of-concept out of this. And I think that from what we heard from everybody, that the concept was proved, that it essentially calms traffic in there. Is, it checks the boxes, all the complete street functions of, the pads have, you know, an extended space to operate safely and not be able to go across and walk in a space that they're unexpected. So we expect them to walk in a crosswalk at Clarissa and Crescent or Mid-Block Crosswalk where they're desiring to get down to the pedestrian mall and get across the street to either the Trailhead, to the Golf Cart Rentals, to the Pancake Cottage, or the other businesses that are on that side, and do that in groups of people. And then also, we recognize that we have slow speeds in town. So, you know, once again, we merged that bike traffic right there with the vehicular traffic because we're going at slow speeds, and it helps calm that vehicular speed. So the task that's in front of us now that we went to council is that we want to have something better than what we have right now as we move into the next visitor season. We did apply for some grant funds that were in 2027 funds. So it's kind of way out there. We want to get some of it implemented now. So we're working on what that, what those solutions are through some design. You'll see that come as we further those designs in front of council. So stay tuned on that. But you can see that it opens up additional real estate and opportunities on that frontage for people to hang out. You can see that some of the pinch points that, as we take maybe the palapas down there, that that opens up that area for other uses. And it, the widened sidewalk on the south face there, that has helped be able to move pedestrians through without walking in the street. I think that what we've heard, though, and what we have witnessed out there is there needs to be some type of barrier system. That could be the serpentine walls. That could be architectural fence. That could be very thin and narrow landscaping. Those are all tools in our toolbox as we do this. Any questions on the elbow? So here's a view, bird's-eye view as we're looking down. You have the Crescent Avenue to your left corner up there. You're looking at Pebbley Beach Road down here at the lower left. And then as we move into Crescent Avenue, you can see the palapas were removed. This is, these are all draft. This is not exactly how it will look. But this is just a quick rendering that the software gives us so that we can talk about it. One of the things, we also recognize that the geometrics when we did the, when we did the demo was that the serpentine wall at Clarissa and Crescent intersection, we knew that, that it's only 26 feet there. So we pretty well proved that we have to move that wall further toward the beach so that we can make those turning radius. But that doesn't mean that we're using all that road. That allows us even to move that sidewalk even a little bit wider on the south side there. So we play with those dimensions. We don't want to have excess pavement. We want to have the right amount of pavement. We feel that there's some opportunities right there by the boat ramp that we can widen out even the pedestrian space. Okay, citywide street rehabilitation. So it's been almost seven years since we did the last asphalt project. And of course, we don't have a hot mix plant here. We have a cold mix, and that's what you see put in the street as interim repairs. We would probably like to see those every three years, a three-year cycle, because it's quite an expense to move over a hot mix contractor over here. COVID came along the way, and so that interrupted our cash flow. And so we didn't have sufficient funds. But now we do have some money budgeted. You see, we have $150,000 budgeted for '24, '25. Usually what we do, just like last time, you'll see us dig out those areas that were temporary patches that utilities for the most part made cuts in the road. We go there and we add five inches of asphalt back in there. And then we crack seal that. And then that would be in anticipation of letting that sit for approximately four to six months. And then we'd be into a slurry seal before this next visitor season. So that, that's been about 10 years now, I think, since the last slurry seal, where you had the roads all newly rejuvenated with a seal coat. Okay? And so that's what the plan is for that. And we anticipate that happening here soon, that we bring that contractor in as we get to the December, January timeframe. Major sewer repair project, and so that includes grinders. So as the sewer flow has some objects into it that cause the pumps to seize up. And so what we do is we're going to put new grinders at each lift station. So that's like your garbage disposal, but real heavy-duty industrial-grade. Can just about grind up anything. And then we'll put odor control at Pebbley Beach Lift Station. And then also bypass pumping like we have at Pebbley, what we built at Pebbley Beach allows our bypass pump to be set up without going down into the lift station. So there'll be some bypassed connections that would be hidden behind some landscaping, but allow us to move in there at a moment's notice with the bypass pump in case we had to do that. That way, we keep everything up and operating because realize that all our sewer flow goes through that intersection, through that circle in front of the Trailhead, gets pumped over to Pebbley Beach Road, and then it gets pumped again up to the sewer plant. So if any of that fails, you know, we have a massive problem. So the budget for that is $914,000. No grant funding, that just comes out of the sewer funds. And we're going to do that here in this off-season for visitors. Any questions on that one? Okay, the Club Dinghy Dock replacement. So between the yacht club and the tuna club, we have a pier that's not in very good shape. So a small, little, narrow pier that goes out to the, out to the Club Dinghy docks. So we got some grant funds from Department of Boating and Waterway, successful in doing that, $300,000. We have a budget of almost $500,000 for this year. We're at design, is at 90%. We're at the environmental permitting. And if we're successful in getting those permits in place, we'll have this in by, you know, sometime maybe Memorial Day. We need to be successful in getting that in. So you would have a brand-new ramp that's ADA compliant instead of a pier. So it's on an angle, an 80-foot ramp, and that would go down to a float. So a more durable than a dock. And then it would have all-new docks. So all of this would be renewed in there. So it's really a good project to get that finish off that frontage out there.
Is the dock going to be bigger, or is it going to be?
The float is going to be bigger. I think the footprint of the docks right now on this build is going to be about the same. But they'll be modularized to potentially add if necessary. I mean, at least we're looking, but as far as our permitting, we're saying it's the same footprint.
Okay, but there might be more availability for more dinghies. That would alleviate a lot of, you know, some other areas.
To make the permit simple, we just said it's the same footprint. But we also, for foresight, everything can be attached in different configurations. It will, the structure and the moorings will all support that if necessary in the future. Green pier improvements. So this is multiple projects. So we have rehabilitate the green pier restroom. So the flooring and men's is not in very good shape. The women's is okay. It just needs a severe deep cleaning in the women's. It needs all-new fixtures. It, and then all-new portions and, you know, all the valves and all that stuff. That's really what it, and a paint job. So all of that to renew that without taking out all of the tile because there's some beautiful tile work in those bathrooms. But it will freshen up those bathrooms. And that's going to be here in this off-season. We were trying to get it accomplished last season, but now we're ramped up to get this done. Then we also have replaced the damaged structural member. So our previous project, we replaced five fender piles, so the outside. Now we're down to 35 structural piles and pile caps. So those are the inside structural members. And that requires more extensive work. We have the permits for five years. So, you know, this is just starting now. So the permits are, get those in place. And so it could be two or three move-ins. It really depends on the efficiency of a contractor coming out. We'd like to get it in one move. But realize that, you know, you can see that we have $450,000 budgeted for, we have, let's see, four, replace damage, so it would be 18. $450,000 for the structural members for multiple years here. So that's really as the, it's kind of pay-as-you-go. And if, you know, we've got lots of multiple, you know, and the mole being a big one, South Beach being another one, the Club Dinghy docks, even though they're grant-funded. And there's no grant funds here yet. We'd like to leverage this. We're out there applying for grants. But, so that what I, I guess what I'm trying to say is it'd be great to do all of this work in one season. But it doesn't potentially match the budget. So we've set it up for success that we could have two or three move-ins. Realize every move-in costs $100, $200,000 in itself to mobilize everything over here. And then we also have a project for replacing all the deck. And that has multiple years, too, of funding. So that's, this is just for this year. You see $600,000, $450,000. The next year, same amount. And then it follows on with lesser amounts as the years go on. Okay? And so what you would see when that project's finished is the restrooms being redone, the electrical being, and the utilities being redone, the structural members being replaced where necessary, and the decking being replaced. So you can see that's a very major project. And it's, you know, it's a vital project. Any questions on that one?
When does this start? I mean, the bathrooms, you said you were ready to go on, but the rest-
And if it is efficient to put out a project to do it this year, I could say it's possible it could happen. One, the structural members could be this year. Okay? So it's really that sweet spot of contractor is a million-dollar project efficient, and when you look at, because last time, we paid $250,000 for five piles. We think we can get that price down to maybe $25,000 a pile. And that's just by, you know, efficiency of numbers, you know, of scale, you know? So if we can get more out there as they move in, then we're going to get those numbers down, and we get value out of it, okay? So that's, that's one. It's not that we're not ready. We have the plans ready. We have the scope ready. It's just whether it's the right fit. Okay, so more details can be found at this link. We're going to put this PowerPoint up on our website. So it's available for anybody. And so I invite you to go look at our budget. And it has all of these projects in there in the last half of the cap, of the budget. So it's the capital improvement program. Any questions?
I mean, is the Five Corners and like the street rehabilitation that you're doing, is that going to kind of work together? Like you said, you're going to repave everything. If you're going to do a bunch of construction, are you going to rip all that out again and start over? Or is that kind of going to work together?
The Five Corners, the areas within the Five Corners will take care of themselves.
Okay, so it's separate then, okay?
Yeah, so all of those areas are not-
Okay.
-within the pavement rehabilitation.
Okay, just, I was curious, like, you do that, and then you rip it out and do it all over again, and?
Yeah, we're very aware of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Bob, can I throw one more out there that I don't, that we didn't hit, which is Pebbley Beach Road?
Okay, it was in here. I don't know what happened.
I think you accidentally skipped it.
Oh, was that the second one that, okay. I do, I do think we-
Oh, you just went past it. There it is.
Oh, there you go.
That's my favorite project. So we did, this is the one with all the hole, all the sea caves, as we call them, okay? And it's, we've been struggling to get this funded for years. And, yeah, city manager and staff really worked hard, and they got $2 million for an earmark. It was great. So, yeah, really, it takes that stretch from gate to gate. And we fix, you know, we've got $2 million to fix those caves, to fix up the paver walkway and to repave the road. So depending on how the bids come in, there may be, you know, as we're saying, there's 30 large voids. We may get 25 of those done, and then we have to do five ourselves because we want to save some money for paving. So whatever those items come in, we're going to balance all that. But that's the goal of the project, is to get that revetment repaired, get paving, and get those pavers and that railing back up to something that looks good, okay? So that should make that road, you know, a lot more presentable. And then also, there in our operations, you know, we, we're going to fix up the fence, and we have fence panels to fix all that, all those damaged fence panels. As we do the Five Corner project, we're going to get some K-rail that's going to be now salvaged, and we can replace some of those damaged K-rails with the ones that come out of here so we can repurpose those. Also, this is just the start. We're calling this a Phase One project. There's actually plans to go to Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four. Phase Two is really what is needed here for sea level rise and the storms that we're starting to see. You know, it's the bigger rock, the A-rock, that gets stacked out there. And we have a set of plans to get that done, and we'd seek other funding. But it's, it's large dollars. And so that would build up this revetment and allow us not to get this continuing damage. The third phase would be to continue that walkway along that expanded revetment all the way from gate to gate. So you would have that paver walkway down there. And then the fourth phase was maybe to do some improvements, recreation, for Recreation in Lover's Cove. So that that would be an area that would be more accessible and have some amenities there right at Lover's Cove instead of just being out there on the, on the rocks, you know? So we did a little bit of that when we did, we repaired the damage. We put a couple little extra seats there. But, you know, just something, so whoever's using that has something in that they're safe.
So does this project just go to Avalon Point? Or does it go past the rock?
It goes from gate to gate. So from the hole to the freight services.
It goes all the way to the freight service?
Yes. And we're going to get every hole that we, and the major holes are the ones that we most focus on.
So with that being said, part of this road project, would something on the hillside as far as to stop all the falling debris, like, you know, the mesh or something like that? Would that be part of like the, because it's all, to me, it's one.
So we do have another capital project that addresses the hillside, okay? And that's got, I think it's like $50,000 in budget. And that's just for the exploratory planning, preliminary planning, okay? And we had, when we had Arizona Drilling and Blasting doing a couple of projects that they've been doing for us- they've been doing for us, one with the Crescent Hillside, that's their forte, is they do that kind of project, and so we're getting pricing from them on that. I think it'll be built in potentially phases, but then we can get our arms around a number of what that would be, and we've got all the plans pretty much drawn, we've got fresh aerial drone footage of the damage there, so that we can say, here, we, here's one, Phase 1, here's Phase 2, here's Phase 3, and, you know, and we know where the rock fall is probably the most risky, and so we need to, you know, address those areas first, you know, so, and then just move through the project and budget, and it, it's a pretty straightforward project if we have the funds, because looking, you know, you've been, everybody's been around country seeing that on road sides, right? They've got all kinds of fantastic geosynthetic stuff to be able to rock-nail in and hold that hillside up, and still be able to maintain it, you know, and still keep where it's not, you know, I think that, before we put the K-rail solution up, what was told to me, it was, they had a $10 million price tag on fixing the hillside, and that's why that solution with the K-rails came in. So, with this solution, we think it's going to be much cheaper than that, and we can address, you know, by risk, you know, what is first, second, third, fourth phase.
And it's not our hillside?
It's not, and it is, it is, yeah, and as a matter of fact, from Abalone Point to the freight lines, that's under a maintenance agreement of the city.
That's why I asked.
And that's why it reopened, if we recall, otherwise-
Can't get funding for it, where it's not our hillside, so we're trying to work through all that.
Good point. But still, we're trying to at least get our arms around it, so we have that number for the community. Okay?
Thank you.
Well, a little bit over a half an hour.
Yeah, thanks, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Any other business?
We don't have any other announcements. Or I don't.
All right, we need insurance?
Good night, yeah.
Good night, Tony, I always forget that.